We'd like to welcome everybody to our August 14, 2024. Pinellas County Board of Supervisors Agenda for a special session today. I just wanted to make sure I got the verbiage right. Just by way of announcement, Supervisor Kavanaugh will be attending telephonically. Is he telephonically, is he there?
Yes, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. And to begin with, we're going to move, I've been asked to move number, item number 11 to item number, so we're going to take that now. We've got our law enforcement guys here, they need to, so come on up. Matt, you're going to be the one to present then?
Are we good? Yeah, there we are, all right. Matthew Thomas, Chief Deputy, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. And we are here for a lease agreement for a helicopter. Chairman. And essentially, we have the money already from the state. So DEMA granted us the money, 9.4 million. And this will be the lease to actually use that money to secure a helicopter. And so what we're doing is we're leasing from a specific company that is essentially a one-stop shop for us. We get the helicopter, we get it outfitted, and we get it in time to meet the requirements of the grant, which ends in 2027. It started in '22, so we're behind a little bit. That's why we're kind of pushing this fast. And so this helicopter will be dedicated to kind of what our Hueys doing now with the rescues, the border mission stuff. And that's where the money came through. DEMA was specifically for the border mission stuff.
Okay. Okay. Is there any questions from anybody? Supervisor McClure?
Thank you, Chairman. Is this going to replace the Huey? Or is this just in addition to the Huey? So this makes us, what, a third helicopter there?
Chairman Supervisor McClure, this will be in addition to. And this is essentially a newer platform and a more nimble platform. And one thing I failed to mention is at the end of this lease, we, the county, will be able to purchase this helicopter for $1. So we're getting the grant money to purchase it. And at the end, we'll get to own it for $1. So it'll become county property, which will keep our fleet running for quite some time in the air. And it'll be, when I say nimble, the Huey, as our pilot knows, he fights that thing. I'm not going to say fight, he loves flying it. But it's a little bit more cumbersome. It's a bigger helicopter. And this, based on our platform, as he was informing me this morning, is one of the most common used for law enforcement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it? Supervisor Sertie.
So you say we have one pilot?
Supervisor Sertie, Chairman Supervisor Sertie, we have two pilots right now. And they have, we have two pilots, one mechanic, and we're working on more. And we're actually, we've been working on getting some volunteers as well. Because, believe it or not, we have people that want to fly for us for free. It's just getting bad.
I was going to say it'd be nice to have succession too, if something happens to one, then you don't want to have an idol.
Yes, sir. And our pilots do plan for that. They're looking, because they know they have a shelf life, just like we all do. And quite frankly, they are a lot more marketable in the private industry than they are working for the government. So they can go make a lot more money. And those offers come quite often. And so we understand that keeping pilots and having a succession plan to keep our air program in place is very important.
So, of course, in my district, it appears, it's the most rugged of the remote districts. Rescue-wise, how is it used? I know usually when there's a rescue, it's DPS, which has a bigger, you know, which can lift a lot. But how is it used in regards to the mountainous areas?
I am going to call up my pilot, because he can give you very detailed information on how he does those rescues.
Good morning, gentlemen, thank you. My name's Corby Pacora, I'm the chief pilot for the sheriff's office. And I, sorry to jump in, but we actually have three full-time pilots and we have six volunteer pilots. We just hired a second mechanic. We do have a succession plan in place. We're training two new pilots right now. So that's going to be something coming down the pipe. The pilots that we have recently acquired, Deputy Love is a newer pilot, but he just started flying regular missions with us in the last year. So as far as that goes, we actually are pretty well-staffed and we have a plan in place to make sure that we have continued pilots in the future. The Huey is actually the only medium-lift helicopter in the state. So we actually have capabilities greater than any other agency out there, other than Homeland Security and their Blackhawks, and the PJs, which operate the Blackhawks. So with this H-125, basically what we have is a fixed-cost, known-cost aircraft that we'll be able to sustain for 20, 30 years going forward in the future. It's a common airframe used in search and rescue, holds the world record for the highest landing on top of Mount Everest, and it's commonly used in rescue situations throughout the world. California Highway Patrol uses it, the Sierra Nevadas, for hoist rescues. So getting to that point, we'll have multiple abilities to be able to actually effect rescues, and that'll be via hoist, like we do with the Huey. And also, it's coming with the vertical reference longline kit with a human external cargo hook system. So we're able to do longline rescues as well in absence of a hoist. So basically, we'll be able to go from doing rescues in the helicopter in one mission to doing patrol work and border work and anything else that we need moving forward in the future.
What are the rules on, I have wilderness area in my district. You can't just joyride over the wilderness area or touch down, but if it's a legitimate rescue, there's no problem going in and hoisting somebody out of the wilderness?
Yes, sir. So to answer that question, wilderness area is basically an area that's outlined on the chart. It's blue with little dots in it. And that wilderness area is a rule, it's not a law. So they ask you to remain 2,000 feet above that wilderness area. But obviously, rescues and law enforcement activity take precedence over that. It's not something you can get necessarily violated for flying lower than that. It's an ask, it's not an actual law stating that you cannot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 11 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? And the ayes have it. Okay. Item number one. We've been asked to withdraw this, so can I get a motion recommending a withdrawal?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to withdraw item number one from the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay. Item number two, work session. This is a major comprehensive plan amendment request by the owner-applicant to re-designate 1,227.41 acres from moderate-low-density to green-energy production. And we have, it looks like.
How are you? Do you sing? Sangita?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Sangita Deoker presenting an overview for this year's 2024 major comprehensive plan amendments that we have received. Just to give you an idea, this year, we have received eight major comp plan amendments, five of which are solar projects, and the other three refer to changes from intensity activity centers to employment or industrial use. There's one which we have is the Project Bella, which is the gas-fired power generation facility. So to begin with, I would just share with you the schedule for this year. This is that time of the year where we begin the process of first sharing. This is a sharing information for all of the projects that we have received in terms of land use change. So we are still in the process of gathering information. We are still in the process of analysis, because we are still receiving documents from applicants. So this is an information sharing for all of these projects. So to give an overview of the schedule, we had the 60-day review process and responses completed August 10. And staff is in the process of reviewing all of the comments that we have received from various agencies. Today is the work session where we introduce these projects to the board. The first public hearing is going to be September 5, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee. And after that, we have September 19 is the first, the other public hearing, which is the planning and zoning. And tentatively, as decided, is October 30, the final decision made by the board. And that is being scheduled for last month of, the last date of the October, or likely might be November. So as I mentioned, these are the, today we are at the work session for the board. And these are the eight projects that we have received. The ones, as I have not highlighted in gray, are the ones which are solar, the five solar projects, Ore Valley Solar, Cactus Flower Solar, TAP Solar, Frontier West Solar, and the Frontier East Solar. The other ones that we are, the RV storage, four RV storage that's at I-8 in Montgomery. The Project Bella is a thermal gas-fired power generation facility. And the last one, which is the Sun Hill Project Data Center. And I would request, the first that is going to be presented by Monica Smriti, and here she goes.
Hello, good morning, Board, County staff, and members of the audience. I am Monica Smriti. I am a new team member of Pinellas County Planning Division, as well as a new taxpayer resident of unincorporated Pinellas County. So I am presenting the case PCPA 00524, the Overtown Solar Project. As Sangita mentioned earlier, this is more of an informational session and less of an analytical. However, I would request the board to provide us with your feedback by end of this presentation, so that we can take your feedback and incorporate those in our analysis, and then, you know, like, go forward from there. So this project is by the applicant SWCA Environmental Consultants, on behalf of the owner 310 SM8 ME LLC, to re-designate 1,227.5 acres of land from moderate-low-density residential to green-energy production for a 145-megawatt photovoltaic solar power plant with the battery storage. The project is located in San Manuel. It's a census-designated area within Pinellas County region. You can see the location marked by the red star on this map. The current comprehensive land land use designation is moderate-low-density residential, and the project is surrounded by the other land uses, general public facilities services, towards the northeastern portion and the mid-intensity activity center towards northwest, and major open space towards the southern area. The current zoning is general rural. And the current uses for this site is, it's a vacant land with a portion of the project area previously used as an ore processing site by the San Manuel Copper Mine between 1955 to 2003. To the west of the site is the San Manuel neighborhood, which includes residential, commercial, and institutional uses. Currently, the site is a vegetated undeveloped land, sloping generally from southwest to northeast. The existing San Manuel substation is located in the northern portion of the site that you can see here, marked by a triangle on this map. And the site is part of the big wash San Pedro River watershed, with minor washes running from southwest to northeast, including the San Pedro Big Wash. Even though these washes are not federally regulated, it is essential for, to consider the natural drainage flow during the site development process for the applicants. To the east of the site is San Pedro River. The proposal is to, for a 145-megawatt solar photovoltaic generating facility, and up to 145-megawatt battery energy storage system, and 115-kilowatt generation tie transmission line to be connected to the regional electric grid at the existing San Manuel substation. Now, we would request your feedback and comments if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is mostly Mr. McClure's district, but it affects mine as well. And, well, we already know some of the answers on this infrastructure. It'd be good to get some word out to the residents. So the San Carlos irrigation project, which at one time generated power at San Carlos Dam, and then they struggled down there. Would this help to relieve any of those problems with their failure to be able to deliver a, an economical electrical product?
This is a very good.
Sorry, Monica. The nature of these comp plan amendments is, usually they occur very early in the process. I don't think that any of these projects probably have a power purchase agreement yet in terms of understanding where that power will be uploaded to the grid, or who will own those electrons when they're on the grid at this time. I don't think we're aware of any involvement with San Carlos with respect to this, but the intent is to, maybe it wasn't as evident as it is from a staff perspective, but this is really not usable land, it was part of the mine, it's tailings dam, and they're proposing to put some solar in that old property and make it usable again to generate some electricity.
But you have to understand what we hear from our residents, what's in it for me? How does this help me? And that's why I'm trying to get the answers now. And.
Understood.
A lot of people don't even realize that San Carlos doesn't generate any electric anymore, like it was intended when it was built. It would be nice to get that back online as well.
Yes, sir.
Or Mike, you can do a nuclear plant there, like you would like.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick comment.
Yes, yes.
So Mr. Sertie, just for your clarification there, so, yeah, that's APS there, that substation. So it'd go to the APS system more than likely.
Okay.
Because that's your power Salmon Well. Skip is all around it, but APS is Salmon Well. The residents aren't real happy about this, in that area. It upsets their view, if you will, from the road. That's what they deem as their tourist attraction, and that is down the hill and in the way. So while the companies won't hear much, they say they don't have much opposition, those people don't write emails, they call my office.
Yeah. So this conversation is for the folks in the audience as well, to realize that we're hearing different things than you hear as well, because we do represent the people, so.
But I think.
Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Yeah, you bet. And I think to add to that, though, with what I think Supervisor Sertie's trying to look ahead with some of this stuff. I mean, we're going to have a data company that's going to be, as part of the comprehensive plan amendment, and those particular facilities, they take a lot of power. And the last thing we need to be in is a position that they've been in, in Texas, where they've had power outages and power shortage. We need to be looking ahead, not just on our water, but with the energy as well, with power. And so those are some things. So it'd be nice to know where this power is actually going to be used, and how it's going to be used. If it's going to stay in the state of Arizona, is it going to stay in Pinellas County? Is it going to go out of the county? Is it going to go out of the state? Those might be some things that are considered and talked about and discussed about. Many of you are plugging into either APS or SRP. And so I think it'd be helpful for me, as an individual making these type of decisions, to be able to see that far out ahead. That would benefit me big time as a decision-maker. Supervisor, what's your name?
Miller.
Yeah, I had a.
Not many people want to call me.
I call you brother, but yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The whole San Carlos thing is to, just some background on that, it was just originally designed to send electricity out to a farm, a farmhouse, and a well. I mean, it was not really ever designed or built for urban-type deliveries. It's very old and antiquated, and has a lot of issues. They buy all of their electricity off the grid, because the dam no longer produces electricity. So the San Carlos thing is going to be with us until there's some kind of resolution as to how to either infuse money from the federal government to them to bring up their system, or have them absorbed into some other power system. So, and that being said, as far as the electricity produced, there's no way to track these electrons. They're produced, they're put into a substation, and everybody's just pulling the switches and getting the power where the demand is on a day-to-day basis, hour by hour. So I would tell you that Pinellas County is using their fair share of the power. It might not be to your house, but we have enough industry, enough businesses now, that demand large amounts of electricity, that most of it stays pretty close, because they don't like to send it very far on the line. So this whole concept that, oh, they're going to send this electricity to Mesa or someplace, there's just no way to even analyze that, one way or another. I mean, it's just on the grid. And they're taking it as they can get it. So to that point, APS, SRP, even the EDs are screaming for more production of power. Because we just, they already can see the production is, we're not going to be able to meet the demand in two or three or four years. We will become the same scenario as California has with brownouts and blackouts and those types of things, if we don't get ahead of this. And they're really good at predicting how much power they're going to need, and they can see right now that needs to be more put on production, somehow, some way. So it is a challenge. I don't know, you know, how these folks are, they want electricity, but they don't want to see how it's made, I guess, is what it amounts to. And something's got to give, one way or another. I guess the other thing, but this might be for staff, when the green energy designation that we're giving it, because is that, one time, I've seen it as an employment, and I've seen it as green energy, and I've seen it as industrial. What creates the criteria to classify it? This one, I think, is green energy, if I'm correct. And, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think they're all good ways to zone them, but I want to know why you would zone it in green energy.
Sure. A couple of different answers to that. So any of the industrial-grade solar, which is over an acre, especially if they contain, which they often do, a best storage system, sometimes a substation, we zone them I-3 with a PAD overlay. And so all the cases that you've seen recently, they're all industrially zoned with a PAD overlay, to limit that to the solar project that's proposed.
Okay.
Okay. And then, these, what is it, 22, when we devalue somebody's property because we zone something different, which number is it? Chris, help me out, or somebody help me out.
207.
207, there we go. Does that come into play here?
Absolutely. As part of the rezoning case, once we get past the comp plan amendment and it starts the rezoning process, yes, we will have to get a 207 waiver as part of that, when the property is rezoned.
And the waiver is signed by whom?
The property owner.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
The property owner in this case is BHP.
BHP is the property owner, okay. Okay. Any other questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Item number, we're on to the next one, which is item number three. Another comprehensive plan amendment request with the Morris Brow to re-designate 121 acres from highly-activity to an RV boat storage facility.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board. Patrick Roberts, Senior Planner, here to discuss case PCPA 0624 for the I-8 Montgomery Project. This is a request for a major comprehensive plan amendment to re-designate, this actually changed 121 acres of land from high-intensity activity center to employment, to develop an RV and boat storage business and other compatible industrial uses. So the property is, for land use change, approximately 121 acres. This is on a section of I-8 and West Montgomery Road, nearby Casa Grande and Eloy. The property owner on this case is Bruce Galloway, representing Montgomery I-LLC, and the applicant is Adam Bowe from Witty Morris &amp; Bowe PLC. This is a map showing the approximate location of the property right off of I-8. This is a map showing the subject areas of the properties and the existing designations. You can see the area is surrounded by a very low-density residential and moderate-low-density residential to the north, and the subject site is encompassed by High Intensity Activity Center. The designation for the 121 acres is actually going to be that section north of the green wash, those two parcels. The zoning of the property is currently GR, and some surrounding zonings include GR Properties, Arizona State Land, and an MPCMP to the southeast for the Atessa Racetrack. This is a map showing the impacted site and the flood zone A designation from FEMA flood tracking. As you can see, the green wash impacts the site, as well as various riparian areas following that green wash. This is an aerial showing the nearby residential properties to the north, as well as some additional residential to the east that have remained undeveloped. There's some nearby agricultural uses and the Atessa Motorsports Complex to the southeast. So current conditions of the site, there's direct access onto the Interstate 8 via Montgomery Road. There's existing proximity to existing land use designation, employment land use designations and associated zonings. The entire property is impacted by the flood zone A designation. And the developer is proposing to develop employment land uses on the 121 acres proposed, with the intent to develop an RV and boat storage facility primarily, and eventually develop later industrial-compatible uses on the remainder of the site. At this point, does the board have any questions or comments for staff?
Any questions?
No.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. We're good, unless we want to, do we want to hear from the applicant? Maybe they don't want to talk.
I just wanted to add one more piece of food for thought. When we look at the interstate corridor and the interchange in the High Intensity Activity Center, one would notice that if you're going to have a High Intensity Activity Center, that would be a great place to have it, right off the interstate where there's an interchange. And this is not intended in support of the applicant, but I think it's important information to share. When Patrick shared the floodplain graphic, you could see that the entire property is in zone A of the floodplain. Pretty difficult to develop a High Intensity Activity Center where you have the floodway of a major wash going through the property. So essentially, what the applicant is asking for is the ability to do some development in that area, remove that activity center from that one quadrant, so that they can make use of that property for anything that they can go through the FEMA process and take out of the floodplain. The second thing I would add is, with respect to the city of Casa Grande and their general plan, this is in that outlying area in the general plan where there aren't services. So that also limits its potential for higher-intensity, light-industrial, commercial development.
Supervisor. Miller has a question.
Unnecessarily a question. I kind of hit on something Brett was just saying, but those high-intensity things that we have on the zoning map almost be eliminated. we have on the zoning map, uh, almost be eliminated because they're so far out, they're so, I, I, I mean, for that intersect to ever turn into high-intensity would take decades, like 50 or 60 decades to get before that's gonna happen out there. The other thing is, I think everything along I-8 on both sides will most likely end up some type of industrial, commercial, just because, and that's where, uh, Casa Grande has, uh, identified, uh, other industrial stuff. And I was looking at some old maps and new maps and I can just see we use the color purple. It's just working its way down both sides of I-8. So I think that is gonna be a natural area, uh, corridor for, uh, industrial-type uses, uh, high-intensity commercials use, not, not, not shopping centers, but factories and, and those types of things.
We appreciate the comments and staff will incorporate them into our future reports.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Item number four. Work session, um, this is in regards to case number PZPA-00724. Major comprehensive plan amendment request for cactus flower solar. Sagita, you're up again.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members. Sagita Deoker presenting the next, uh, solar, uh, project that we have received. Uh, this is, uh, the cactus flower solar requesting re-designation of 2,148 acres from very low-density residential and, uh, moderate-low-density residential to the green energy production for a utility-scale solar power, uh, plant. The land use, uh, change as stated is for approximately 2,150 acres located eight miles south of Eloy, um, approximately seven miles south of I-10. The owners, uh, we have multiple owners as mentioned, Curtis Ten Thirty-Five LLC, Gordita LLLP, Stan Bog Farms LLC, and Toon, Toon Family LP, number three. We have the applicant agent, um, Cactus Flower Solar LLC, and Heather Wise is representing, uh, this, uh, owner. To show you the location of this, uh, proposal, you can see that it is in the southern portion, central, uh, south of Eloy in the Penal County area. You can see that it's marked by a star. Uh, the land use designation, there are two land use designations currently. It's very low-density residential and a moderate-low-density residential, so, um, and the proposed, uh, land use is the green energy production. This is the project boundary and you can also see the vicinity, um, surrounding this area. You can see that at the state land, uh, General Rural and to the east, to the north is the city of Eloy, um, and to the east, as one can see in the later maps, is the purple, already, I would say, approved Eloy solar. The aerial map shows, um, the agricultural land that is, uh, pretty much weakened and not, um, you know, being used, uh, or I would say not developed. This is the, uh, further zoning showing, uh, General Rural, uh, surrounding the north and south, on the southeast is state land, to the west is again state land, and in the next portion, one, I would like to show you the flood zone that is, uh, the southern portion of this, uh, project parcel, the south of this, which kind of is, um, this, the flood zone A. Uh, flood zone X is in the northern portion of this, and to the east of this parcel, it just abuts the approved Eloy solar. And this is what the map, um, uh, shows the existing Eloy solar that is being approved. It's, uh, moving forward in the rezoning process and this is just abutting the, the red dotted line showing this. This map also shows, um...
Mentioned SONAC that's coming to them shortly as well because it's in this vicinity, correct?
It's to the southwest, yeah. This is, uh, this, this map actually shows the proposed I-11 corridor, uh, that is part of the proposed, uh, transportation, hi, high-capacity corridor, um, that kind of bisects, um, east-west diagonally in this, uh, project area. To just give a perspective, this is, to the south of this, southwest of this is the SONAC solar, which is already approved and is moving forward again for a rezone. It is in the extended, uh, uh, area for the planning for the city of Eloy and, uh, they have mentioned in their general plan that, uh, any solar projects should be south of this, which is in this region. Current site conditions, agricultural land, relatively flat topography, no sensitive biological resources that have been, um, identified, and so no impacts to endangered species. Additional site considerations is the potential future high-capacity corridor I-11 that cuts across the site. Eloy Solar Project to the east that already has, uh, green energy production as land use, and the site having two zones, flood zones, the ANX, uh, there is a slope from west to east that goes point zero-one foot by foot. Uh, proposed, uh, solar generation for 270 megawatt of battery storage to includes the solar PV modules, uh, the standard, uh, uh, infrastructure that is, that is part of the solar facilities, the BE, uh, the BES, which is the battery energy storage, the ONM building, the associated infrastructure, and a new APS substation via approximately 30-mile GNDI transmission line is proposed. I'm open for any questions at this point.
Mr. Chair.
You bet.
This is a question, more of a comment to Supervisor Miller, that, you know, this is one of those where it's way the heck out of the way, nobody sees it. The biggest complaint I've had is that, well, that's where I go dove hunting, so I told them, shoot low, you know, so, so, um, but this is one of those where it's out there where nobody sees it, and these are the kind I appreciate.
Yeah, I, may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, glad you brought up the dove hunting because I'm cleaning my shotgun right now. But, uh, uh, I was trying to get a head around, it seemed like every, is, is this an island? Is this a county island? It seems like everything you said was, well, uh, Eloy's adjacent to it, Eloy's adjacent to it, I'm trying to track where it was, or is it just a gap or what's going on there? Can I get a better map?
Yes, I can show you the map where...
But Eloy has more square miles of in-city limits than, than a lot of cities in Arizona.
So I would say that this is not an island, but it is, um, it is south of Eloy, if you can see that, it's not really developed in terms of, uh, subdivisions or any development around, it's, it's, it's pretty isolated, undeveloped, uh, area, is that...
Do one more map, go forward.
Forward.
Okay, right here.
Supervisor, one of the things that makes it confusing is Sagita mentioned the Eloy solar multiple times.
But it's not Eloy.
But it's, it's not in Eloy, it's in the county. You guys already did a comprehensive plan amendment for it.
Okay, well, that helps, that helps.
Sorry for that confusion, the name is Eloy Solar, so that's why I was referring to that as...
But is it in their planning area? Just curious, because they will call, they will call us. It is in their planning area.
Yeah, Brett's shaking his head it is.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had the same, uh, comments as, like I said, I don't think people are against solar, they just want it in the right place, and the more remote where people don't have to see it, the better. And I've already lost all the dove hunting in my area, straight down Ironwood. This gets all gone.
It's all gone?
Yeah. Kind of my backyard. Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Uh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, all right.
The next project is Project Bella, uh, PZPA-00824, again, um, presented by Sagita Deoker. This is a request to re-designate 350 acres from moderate-low-density residential, uh, to general public facilities and services for a 480-megawatt natural gas-fired power plant with 440-megawatt battery storage. The size of this project is 350 acres, uh, location is south of Selma Highway, north of I-8 and 1.5 miles south of city of Casa Grande. Owners are Brian and April Rhodes, and, uh, we have the applicant agent with, Witty Morris Bog, uh, PLC, and Alex Hayes, uh, representing the owners. Uh, this is the locations, uh, shown by a star, that is along I-8 as, uh, shown, um, it's in the central west portion of the Penal County, uh, and this is just north of that project that Patrick just, uh, shared, and I will further zoom into the, uh, existing land use, which is, um, moderate-low-density and proposed land use is the general public facilities and services. To show you the perspective of the surrounding land use, we have General Rural to the north and south, and you can see the location, how, uh, that sits across in terms of the vicinity map and also sharing, uh, the, uh, infrastructure. The, the inset on the right side, the, uh, map shows the existing 500-kV line, transmission line, just actually crossing east-west, um, uh, on Carmen Road, uh, it, there are two lines on that, the, uh, 500-kV and a 231. And we have, if you see, a line that is to the north of that is the gas, existing gas line, uh, that the project intends to tap into using the natural gas. And you can see the location is just north of that, um, uh, I-8 and, uh, in this map, it doesn't show the intensity center, but I will ensure in the upcoming presentation so we can show the locations both, so, for you to get an idea of, uh, the two, uh, major comp plans that have come up, but this is just very close to that one. Uh, you can see the aerial map, uh, showing the, uh, agricultural land that is being used and, uh, to the south of this is the, uh, the, the canal, which is, uh, existing, uh... And this is the, uh, project boundary. One can see that CR3, uh, is to the northeast of this, uh, project across Midway Road. There is some development and some houses to the northwest, um, and, and you can see those two roads that are private roads, Praseco and, um, and Polar Road. Uh, the state land to its southeast and, uh, pretty much GR to the north and south and west. Current site conditions, the property is, uh, used for agricultural operations. To the south of the property is bounded by the green wash, uh, that has the canal with substantial riparian habitat. Existing 140-foot high-duke, uh, central 500-kV line and a 230-kV WAPA transmission line, and the existing El Paso natural gas pipeline to the north edge of the property. And, uh, this is, this is the, uh, the infrastructure that I was talking about. The red line shows those transmission lines that cross this, um, project area and the boundary shown by a black dotted line, and the green is, um, actually showing the natural gas, uh, pipeline that is existing. Uh, from that perspective, uh, it seems like an ideal, uh, location with no additional infrastructure required for this project. Uh, you can also see that, this, uh, that also gives an aerial showing, uh, some development to the northwest, uh, platted, and across the road, across the midway, uh, you have some, uh, CR3, uh, houses that are there. This also has the, uh, to give you a project overview, uh, this is a thermal gas-fired power generation facility with natural gas, uh, I think the first one in the Penal County. Development of two principal, uh, components of, uh, 440-megawatt thermal gas-fired power generation, uh, 440-megawatt of a battery energy storage system. The site plan footprint is, uh, actually on the northern half of the site. The southern portion has the flood, uh, flooding, uh, issues that would need to be taken care of. Utilizes existing easements and infrastructure for the high-voltage transmission and natural gas pipelines. Uh, 500-kV switchyard will occur on the site itself, so there is no additional electric or gas infrastructure required. I'm open for any questions at this point.
Supervisor Miller.
If I may. So this is interesting because the, uh, east side of Midway Road is my district, the, uh, west side of Midway is District One. So, and there's residents on both sides that have, uh, basically are in opposition of it, uh, and they actually had two, two public meetings at, uh, Francisco Grandi, the second one ended up in, uh, a bit of a dust-up. So, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. Uh, this, this one that, um, has met opposition early, uh, I, I, I think the facility is needed, I think it's, uh, I, I think it's an appropriate location, but we'll have to wait and see, um, where things go with this.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have anything you wanted? Okay, seeing that there's, I, I have one comment. You know, I grew up in East Mesa, but oftentimes we'd go to Gilbert to see family members and, and I often think of the gas plant that's right there in Gilbert, and they've got it very well landscaped and so on and so forth. Um, that might be some things that could be considered when they, when they go forward on this, and it really adds a lot of value. I mean, it did not diminish any value whatsoever for that area right there. Still in the town of Gilbert and prices have escalated just like anywhere else, but I didn't even know for years that that was even exist, I just knew there was something there, I just, the way it's screened off and, and so on and so forth, it's, uh, but now that I'm more into this side, talking about energy and water and things of that nature from this perspective, I'm glad we've got stuff like that, so...
Thank you for your comments. We definitely would, uh, incorporate those, uh, in the upcoming applications that we receive.
And I, and I think that would go for any of these projects that are coming. You know, I think I've heard Supervisor Miller, sometimes we've, we've tried to push it even more to the limit, I mean, to the extent, to major extent of making sure that the aesthetics are covering and everything, but when it's out in the middle of nowhere, I mean, we, we went to California and went to Disneyland and on the way there off of I-10, they've got those huge, just as you get into California, A, I mean, it's hundreds and thousands of acres of solar energy, and it's just right on the main hall, you know, that's it, so... Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any, did you have any more?
Well, just again, uh, if you don't mind, Chairman, it's on that, it's on that industrial corridor, it's right there on I-8 where it's, there's gonna be development there of some type, uh, continuing, you know? Location, location, location. But the op, the, the opposition to facilities like this is, that's, I wanna live out there because there's nothing out there. That's, you know, and I mean, that's their, that's their rationale and, and I get it, I guess, but, I don't know, how long it's gonna stay that way? That's the hard part.
Okay, thank you, Sagita.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we're on to item number six, which is another work session. Uh, this is a plan amendment request by Hidden Valley Ranch Partners, and we have Kendall.
Yes. Morning, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Kendall Riley, my title is Planner, and I'm here to present to you case PZPA-00924, titled Tap Solar. This is a request to re-designate 1,092 acres from moderate-low-density residential to green energy production with a solar flower plant and with battery storage. Uh, approximate size is 1,092 acres, location is off of North Hidden Valley Road and West Val Vista Road in the Hidden Valley Maricopa area. Owner is Hidden Valley, Hidden Valley Ranch LLC, applicant is Keith with Kim Lee Horn Associates. Here's a county map showing the location of the project marked by the red star in the Hidden Valley Maricopa area. Current land use designation is moderate-low-density residential with very low-density residential surrounding, and along the Vical Wash to the east of the property is... residential surrounding, and along the Vico Wash to the east of the property is proposed regional park. Proposed land use designation is for green energy production. Current zoning on-site is CR three PAD and CB one PAD. Surrounding zonings is general rural and suburban ranch. One thing upon research of the project is its possible location under a test flight zone for the Department of Defense. We have reached out to the Department of Defense but have not received comments back Current conditions of the site, it is adjacent to the Vico Wash. There, the site is flood zone X mostly, except for a 2.2 kind of triangular portion to the northeast that is flood zone A. Relatively flat topography. It is currently being used for agricultural purposes. A environmental review tool was submitted, and it identified 53 impacted species due to that adjacent Vico Wash and the Palo Verde Mountains to the northwest. Proposal would create photovoltaic solar energy of 1,000 megawatts and include a battery energy storage system of 1,000 megawatts. Also, an addition of a 500 kilovolt utility substation on-site, and they do have plans to interconnect to the transmission grid of the existing Penal West substation. Any questions for staff?
Let me just, Chairman, quick.
Supervisor.
So how, how would the DOD flight plan change this? How is that impacted?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor McClure, unknown at this point. However, I think I've shared with the board before that the DOD enacted a new process last year where any green energy projects, meaning solar and wind, have to be, upon application, they have to be notified. It's a two-step process. The first step is an internal review that occurs at Luke Air Force Base with Air Force Staff. If they're good with the placement of the green energy facility, they can then provide a letter, I don't know what the letter is called, but some sort of a letter to us saying that they're okay moving forward. If they're not okay, they then send that to DC for review at the Pentagon. Thus far, we haven't had any that have gone to the Pentagon, but it's a, it's a pretty new process. We've only been involved in it for about a year. The, the, what the challenge may be is there's a major military training over flight zone that is, I don't think it's directly over the, this, this site. I think it's to the north of it, but they hold those things very sacred. And from talking to the folks at Luke Air Force Base, we've met with them a couple of different times, they're concerned with replacements of green energy facilities adjacent to these training routes, training areas. At one meeting, they said it messes with their avionics, there's a reflectivity issue as well, but we really don't know what they're going to say until we get their reply. I hope that helps.
No, that, that's helpful, because I know like at Penal Air Park, we have a big, we have a major solar field going in south of that, and so that was a concern, but, and that's DOD covered there too. So I just thought, okay, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
That one slipped by before the new process. However, from a staff perspective, we did coordinate with both of those military sites that were there, as well as Penal Air Park. They were part of those discussions when, when that was cited and approved. I, I believe we had support letters from them in that packet.
So the DOD could essentially shut this down. They said like, eh, no, not going to happen.
It could certainly cause us to think about it. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
Good.
Supervisor Sertie.
Thank you, Chairman. Since this is a work session, we, we have a chance to do a line of questioning that we don't on ordinary meetings. And I know that before I was seated, the previous board kind of made the decision they wanted to go as much green and solar as possible. One of the questions I have, and we don't really have answers to it, I think a lot of the folks in the audience that are here representing would know, but is, is this happening as much in Maricopa County, or are they only bombarding Penal County with it? I mean, Maricopa County, even though it's got a bigger population, it already, it also has more landmass. Is, is this coming everywhere, or is it only coming here? And Brent, I don't know who would have the answer to that, but, and I know that Steve has asked what is coming at us in the future. Do we have a timeline on, because a lot of these we don't hear about until they're before us. So what is happening in the whole valley? And is it happening to Pima County as well and Maricopa County?
She just handed me something I haven't read before. According to the state database, between 2016 and 23, there's 62 new solar projects in Arizona, 19 of which are located in Penal County. I will tell you that we meet as directors statewide with, with all the counties four times a year. This is a very hot topic with respect to those. I think that a lot of areas of state are, are seeing pressure. One of the things that Sagita set up front is there's nine comp plan amendments. That's a new record, and that's twice our past record, which was four. And I think it says a lot that there's, there's five solar projects amongst those eight projects and one power plant. And I think it's showing that we have developable land, we have relatively inexpensive land, and we have a lot of infrastructure that goes through this county that, that aids in that type of development. A lot of transmission lines, gas lines, large substations. And we meet monthly with the utilities, and they're investing a lot of money and time and into expanding all of the utility grids in Penal County. I think that may have something to do with it.
Whatever that was she just handed you, I'm pretty sure that everybody up here would be interested in it as well.
You bet.
And that one ended in 2023. Is there one going forward to 26, 27 to show what, what may be coming as well?
We'll research that. I think a good point to make is this is, for us, the first knowledge we have of future projects is the comp plan amendments. So this is, this is early on, and this is ahead of, you know, a couple of years of process to actually develop them. So this is the first time when we become aware. We are aware of two other projects, large-scale solar, that did not file for major comp plan amendments this year, that will be filing for next year. They just, they were just too late for the date.
And everyone up here, we all wish that supervisors 20, 30, 40 years ago had saw into the future. A lot of this land you're saying that we have, it seems remote and invaluable now, or not valuable. But I was just having a conversation with Steve earlier that Tempe used to be agriculture. That's unheard of now, and that's just in his, he's a young fella, and that's happened in his life, so.
Oldest of all.
What, you know, we need to look at this long-term, and maybe 30 years from now, we, we will want this to be more other uses. So if any kind of report you could make on us, I think everybody up here would be grateful for that.
That'd be great. No problem.
Supervisor Miller.
If I, if I may, to Supervisor Sertie's points there, maybe, and maybe we should actually have SRP and APS come in and tell us what they think their projections are at some point, and give us an understanding of how they use this grid down here and how it is, how it shapes the delivery systems statewide. Because I, you know, I mean, it's pretty critical. And I hear from them, but again, maybe for us, all of us and, and the audience, that they show us projections of where they think we're going to be and what we need to do to compensate for that in the future. I think that's a very fair request. I will tell you that we're, we're having a lot of meetings with both of those utilities right now to work on some of these issues, and we've got a couple agreements in the work, in the works to assist us. And I think that that's something that they would be glad to come in and do. As a matter of fact, we just met with APS last week, and then I talked to them Monday, and we met with SRP the week before that. And we're, we're trying to do some of this future planning with them. So thank you for that.
And I'd like to add to what Supervisor Miller just stated. I know that Leo and our staff, Brent, you guys have been meeting with these different utilities for that very purpose, so that when we do our strategic plan as a group coming the first of the year, then we'll have a lot of data they're going to be coming to. I talked to Buck Davis, SRP, and they were coordinating with APS to do the very thing that we're talking about here, because I think going forward, to your point Supervisor Sertie, it's imperative that we have that kind of information. Again, thinking ahead is what we really need to be doing.
I've never heard of Buchanan being called Buck before, so.
Oh.
That's good, that's good. He used to be on our Planning and Zoning Commission.
I know. You know, for a while, when, and I've known Buck for some time, I've always known him as, always thought it was, that was his, Buchanan was his last name, and Davis was his first name, but it's actually the opposite, so. Leo, do you have anything you want to add to that? Because we've had this discussion before.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I would just add that we are meeting with APS, SRP, State Land. We're going to bring in Maricopa and Pima Counties, because some of the processes on how they go about this, we think can also be improved for the community's sake and for the organization's sake and the utilities. And so we are going to be doing a lot of that work behind the scenes and hopefully meeting with the industry as well. I think we all think we can do a better job setting this up and planning for the long term and figuring out what pieces are prime and how to get to those pieces in a more efficient way.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McClure.
I would say, you know, to the number of solar projects, the number of this, so we're being inundated by that because of our expensive land. But I would like to see on these maps, you know, say, okay, well, they're here, they're here. I'd like to see Maricopa's set up, I'd like to see Pima's set up, and ours, and see where all this is, because as you say, it's electrons going into the grid. Where it comes from is irrelevant. You know, so if it can be someplace else, great, but at the same time, now I'm going to upset the assessor, because now you don't have the land that you can tax. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of things to balance here. But different uses could be made of those lands.
Correct, correct.
Supervisor Miller. Let's throw in that other component. A lot of these farmers are out of water, and those farms were their retirement. So if they can unload them, they're going to do it. And the scarcity of the water with the CAP water not coming down here any longer, that's what creates that price of the land going forward to.
You're going to fix that, though.
Right. I'm on it.
Good. Okay. Was there any other questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh, come back on.
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kendall. Item number seven. Mr. Glenn Black.
Morning, Mr. Chair Supervisor. So item number seven here is a PZPA 01024 Frontier West Solar. This is again a request for a major comprehensive plan amendment here to re-designate approximately 1,047 acres from moderate low-density to green energy. This is located just east of Arizona 347 and north of West Lewis Johnson Road. Trace points LLC Superstition Springs, R14 Associates LP, and Arizona RR Ranches are your owners, and Kimley Horn, as well as Rose Law Group is your agents, applicants for this project. So this shows you the general location of the, of this. This is west of Casa Grande, south of Maricopa. On the very north end of this here, we have the Ochim community. So we have here showing you the, closer in on the map, this is a pretty irregular-shaped property involving a number of parcels. And the site currently, it's CR three, CB two, GR. Surrounding is GR, CB one, CB two, C one, one, and SR. So we have a pretty good mixture of zoning in that area. So this is just west of the Nissan testing facility. The topography is flat. We have, you know, mostly agricultural there in the area. The proposal involves a 250-megawatt photovoltaic to include a BES and a 500-kilovolt utility station. So this would conceivably interconnect with the transmission grid of the Santa Rosa substation nearby. And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Anybody have any? Supervisor McClure.
Thank you for reading my mind, Chairman. That area is interesting. There's a lot of development I know that's going to go to the south of that. There's 10 sections that are owned by one property owner that wants to put a huge development down there. That's going to create a whole storm. And there's a lot of other development going on in there, and I just don't know that that's going to be a good mix with that. Just saying.
Supervisor Miller.
And where's the city limits of Maricopa in and around that?
Way north.
Way north?
They're, they're north because Ochim is in the way.
Right.
And then, and then now you're, now you're south of it. But, but there's, but Maricopa is creeping down between Casa Grande and Ochim. There's a little narrow space there. They're coming around there, and they're coming north over the top. They had the space with the golf course, the dunes, yeah, the dunes. That was an issue for a while. They've got a water line across that. Finally, they made a deal with the Ochim, and now they've got their water line looping around. They want to come south and around, so they're going to develop all that to the west and south of Ochim. That's their planning area.
It's all in their planning area. Yeah.
Anybody else? Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Item number nine. Patrick?
So this, this would be, again, my, my case here. This is just to the east of that.
Oh, number eight.
Prior, prior case. So this is Frontier East Solar, and this is PZPA 1124 requesting, again, a major comp plan amendment. In this case, we're dealing with about 160 acres, 70 of which would be employment, and 90 of which would be high activity, high-intensity activity center to green energy. This is just north now of the Nissan test facility, and we had the same applicant agent here for this case. Again, here, we're looking just west of Casa Grande, south of Maricopa. This shows you here that, that red area is, is your high-intensity activity center. And then we have here surrounding, right there to the north and west, you've got Ochim community in the orange, and surrounding GR and C11. So this would be anticipated 50-megawatt photovoltaic and 300-megawatt energy storage BES, again, to tie in with the Santa Rosa substation. And before I forget, some questions were asked on some others about the DOD. So we did reach out to the DOD and provide them application materials. We did hear back from them on this, and so they've asked for additional information, primarily the applicant, you know, attempt to produce that, things like renditions of what the panels will look like, heights of the panels, other things like that. And then also, I, I worked for Maricopa County for about 22 years, and, and I could say that there's quite a few larger facilities that have gone out, particularly in the southwestern part of Maricopa County. So I think I've already compiled some maps of that, so, you know, we'll try to work on getting you some more in the future for that. They did have recent meetings, I believe, at the end of last month, and so we're looking forward to getting their amended citizen partition patient reports to go along with their neighborhood meetings. I think they generally indicated that they didn't have a lot of opposition materialized at these meetings thus far.
Is it way cooler working for us than Maricopa County?
It is. Definitely is.
We wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Did, excuse me. Mr. Chair, quick question to.
Yes, Supervisor McClure.
Mr. Buck, back up a slide there. So 50, 50 megawatts of, of solar and 300 watts of BES. So this looks like a buffer station. So you're taking, they take the power off the grid and hold it, and then when you've got an overload, you just, or not overload, but a high use, then you pump it in. That's what this is really about. And it looks like the 50 megawatts is just a battery charger, essentially.
Mr. Goodman, Mr. Mr. McClure, we've seen a change just in the last year. Typically, the applications we've received would be very similar to many of them that you've heard today, in that you get a solar facility, and, and with that solar facility, initially, they started out to be much larger battery storage.
they started out to be much larger battery storage facilities than the production of the solar facility. And then we've seen that transition to equal between the generation and the battery capacity. The recent trend that we've seen the last six months, and you'll hear more about these coming forward, is independent BES operations that aren't with solar. And I had an opportunity to talk to somebody in, in the industry here just a few weeks ago. And what he told me is, it's very expensive to build a peaking plant, like the one that, that they're building in you guys' district right now off of Judd Road. And it's very difficult to get approval through the Arizona Corporation Commission, as seen by SRP and Coolidge. And then the APS facility that's between Coolidge and Casa Grande, it's a very difficult process. And what folks are finding now is they can install a standalone BES that operates kind of like a peaking plant. So the utility can buy electricity when it's cheap during the day when there's low demand, and then resell it, resell it during peak periods. So it's kind of, if you would say, an industry replacement for the typical peaking plants, which use jet engines from aircraft to do that. So I just, we started noticing some applications of independent BESs. I didn't understand why, so that's why I had that conversation, and that's what I was told. Hope that helps.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay. I think we're on to item number nine now. Robert?
Hello again, Board, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board. Patrick Roberts, again, Senior Planner, here to discuss PZPA O-1224. We're requesting a major comprehensive plan amendment to the comprehensive plan to re-designate 96 acres of land from moderate low-density residential to 80 acres of general, or, excuse me, to employment, this has been changed to employment, and 16 acres of mixed-use residential focus. The intention of this project is to develop both a data center and a standalone battery energy storage system BES alongside mixed-use residential developments. So this property is, land use change, which is 96 acres. This is located off of North Felix Road and East Judd Road in the Arizona Farms region of Santan Valley. The owner is Judd Ventures LLC, and the applicant is Greg Davis and Rose Law Group, and I Plan Consulting, excuse me. This is a map showing the approximate location of the project. This is a comprehensive plan map showing the current conditions of the site, existing moderate low-density residential just south of Magnum Ranch subdivision. And the proposed use would be for 16 acres of mixed-use residential focus on the front 16 acres, and then employment on the rear 80 acres. So the current zoning of the property is GR. It's currently surrounded by CB1, CR2, CR3, CR4, SR zoning, GR zoning, and town of Florence designations. You can see all the brown areas are town of Florence, town limits. The property itself is, is in Penal County. This is an aerial map showing the current state of, of development out in this area. You can see it's largely agriculture on the west, south, and east of the property. Into the north is the Magnum Ranch subdivision immediately adjacent. Then to the east is some GR and SR properties. So current conditions of the site, this has close proximity to the Magnum Ranch subdivision, and direct access to major arterial roadways. The proposal here is to develop the BES and data center uses on employment on the 80 acres, and then implement residential focus mixed-use development on the north 16 acres of the property. So under the employment uses, the intended developments could accommodate battery energy storage systems, data centers, office spaces, and warehousing. The mixed-use residential focus uses could have potential development of commercial retail, neighborhood commercial, professional offices, or multifamily residential. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay. Okay. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, item number 10. Last but surely not least.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a PowerPoint? Mr. Chairman, members of the supervisors, hopefully this one's pretty short. As you know, I've presented a couple of different times with respect to accessory dwelling units, things going on around the state, and certainly with respect to our, our zoning code update. What, what I'm bringing before you today, much like the item I brought forth a month ago with respect to trash, rubbish, and debris, is an interim fix before the zoning code is, is complete. As we've worked on the zoning code update, and have gone through the planning and zoning process with respect to work sessions, we've had three separate conversations regarding accessory dwelling units, and there'll be a new section in the code. However, until that code's adopted, we believe that there's a couple, specifically three edits, that would be fortuitous to make in the meantime to deal with some of our existing demand as, as it relates to our current ordinance, which is guest houses and casitas before it goes to accessory dwelling units. Before 2000, guest houses and casitas were just looked at as an accessory building. 2000 guest house came about, and in 2010, completely new section was developed to include guest houses and casitas. That's what we operate off of now. And as I've mentioned to the board before, we permit a lot of guest houses and casitas in, in Penal County. As you know, there's been a lot of conversation between the cities, as well as with legislature regarding what do we do with these accessory dwelling units just this last session. Bill 2720 was, was approved. It did not apply to us. It applies just to cities and towns over 70,000 in population. But there are some things to learn from that, and some things to consider as, as we go through the zoning code update. The three of those things have to do with, previously, there was a prohibition on renting casitas. An ongoing trend, and certainly a challenge for us, is no means of cooking, or what I'm referring to here as a kitchen facility. And, and we, we honestly, to, to meet the demands of, of applications that we have right now, I think we need to make a few changes. The first one has to do with definitions. So in our existing definition, we're really limited, and quite honestly, not consistent with another portion of state law, which was approved two years ago, which essentially says, if you own a lot, three acres or larger, you can use a factory-built, I'm trying, and the name escapes me right now, park model home as a guest house or casita, which includes a kitchen. So our definition doesn't allow kitchens, but we have to allow kitchens if somebody uses a park model home with, with respect to that. So our recommendation is to strike no cooking facilities. I will tell you, every single one of these applications that we get, they want cooking facilities. The new state law allows for cooking facilities. Phoenix allows for cooking facilities. Tucson allows for cooking facilities. I think we need to make some of these edits just to come in line and, and assist us in our customer service. The last one is, and is never rented or offered for rent. Again, that's an inconsistency with, with what we're seeing. So our suggestion is to, to strike that as part of the text amendment. All the other development standards, setbacks, et cetera, would, would stay consistent. You have to have a primary use on the site before you can have a guest house or casita, et cetera. The other changes that, that we're suggesting is minimum distance from buildings shall be seven feet, or as specified by the building code. That gives folks some flexibility. As Supervisor Miller knows, the minimum distance without fireproofing is five feet. If we end up in a situation where somebody can't meet seven feet, I want to have a little bit of flexibility within the, the building code to do that. And the third change here has to do with how we measure. The last presentation that I gave to the board about two months ago spoke to what we're hearing statewide, what we've heard from some of the special interests that have contacted the board with, with regard to our ADU ordinance. And one of the things that is, is, has continued to have been discussed is what should, what constitutes an ADU, and how does that relate to the primary use? Our current code has no larger than 45% of the floor area of the main building. Now, the information that we got from the Goldwater Institute suggested we move that to 50. What our empirical experience tells us is 45, 50, that doesn't really matter to people. What really matters is people feel slighted if they have a two-story home, and they can only look at the gross floor area of the bottom story as part of it. So this, this next change is consistent with some of our competitors, and that would be no larger than 45% of the gross livable area of the building. So that you can have a larger guest house or casita if you have a two-story house than if you have a one-story house. And that's something that we're hearing all the time. And then the final was a strike of the range oven and stove not permitted. This is not for consideration for a vote today. This is just our initiation meeting. So I just want to see if the board is supportive of us moving forward through Planning and Zoning Commission, and then bringing a text amendment back to the board. If you have any questions?
I think, I think Supervisor Miller does. I think he wants to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like it.
Okay.
Okay. And I think back to, well, some of this stuff is policing. How are you going to know whether somebody's renting something? We ain't got time to go and chase that rabbit. And all they do is they put the plumbing in the wall as soon as we give them the final, then they just put the kitchen in. I mean, some of these things are just common sense, and we need to, to move forward and start allowing it. It also is, you know, the extended family, affordable housing, you know. Hope one of my kids build one so I can move into it someday. So it's just one of those things. I, and I think that we, we need to move forward. So I like those, those proposed changes, Brent.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I agree. I, I think it's good. And I do agree with Supervisor Miller. If I had a casita like that, I'd be one of the first ones pulling cabinets out, putting the stove in. So, yeah. So, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sertie, are you a rebel roger just like everybody else? Well, now, I've been asking to have this on the agenda for a long time, once, once Phoenix made that rule. And I think what we have to be aware of is where will this lead? It's just like every year, the NFL brings out new rules. And the coaches look at those rules, and how can I exploit them? How can we counteract those? And they're doing that now with that new kickoff rule. So I think once this gets allowed, then you're going to see people, oh, wow, I have three acres. I can have, I can have three rentals back there. And they're going to do it as a, like a bed and breakfast on steroids, and they'll be constantly renting them, and it'll be a whole new industry, not for the purpose intended to put grandma out there. So I think we're just going to have to react as, as this happens, and not let it get out of hand. Because I think there is a, there are people that'll exploit this, especially in this economy that we have.
Supervisor, as our existing code stands with these edits, they would still only be allowed one guest house for one primary residence. Now, we'll bring back the larger code with the zoning code update, and it's far more descriptive. These are just some minor edits to help us in the meantime.
Okay. Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, a question, Brent. I was digging into this for some folks not too long ago, and I came across something in the code that was tied to percentage of, the percentages of your backyard and side yard. You took that number, and then you could have the casita, a percentage of that number. It was, it was kind of crazy. And, well, where do you start the side yard? Where do you start the backyard? All kinds of little things there. Maybe we set a ceiling, maybe something like that as far as the amount of square footage. I would be liberal with that, but again, something that made a little bit of sense.
It's interesting that you brought that up. It has to do not with guest houses and casitas, but it has to do with accessory buildings.
Accessory buildings.
And it was, it was exceptionally confusing.
It was.
In terms of how to interpret that, and how large your accessory building could be. So I actually went, it's probably three or four months ago, I'm looking at Darren, I wrote a zoning administrator's interpretation on that, and I cleaned that up to make it make sense now. So that's, that's what we administer to now.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Let me throw another one out there that we might want to think about or address while we're doing this exercise. Storage, or even like a vehicle, storage next to the casita. You know, that, that actually had somebody come in with that idea, which, we ought to talk about that.
Okay.
Because there might be, we might want to consider that as well.
You mean like an orchard, something like?
Well, that.
Orchard, or a carport, or, or even a garage, you know.
Because now, yeah, now you're jumping into the, oh, sorry.
Yeah. You know, you get, now all of a sudden, well, what doesn't say I can't?
Well, and then, oh, and then oops, it's over 200 square feet. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, you have all that stuff.
Yeah, as it stands now, we limit that entire structure. Even though the whole structure's not livable, that entire structure can't be over 45%. That's how we administer that, that now.
Overall.
Okay. I, this is something that, I'm, I'm with everybody else. This is something that's been a long time coming. We've gotten a lot of this stuff, so I think you're headed in the right direction. I know I sent you a copy of an email I got yesterday in regards to the height limit on some of these garages, 25 feet. Are we still moving forward with that?
We're updating that in the zoning code.
Okay, good.
But there won't be a text amendment on that.
It was used to be 20 feet.
RVs, well, they are, they, you know, we got a lot of these RVs now that they like to include, put them in enclosed buildings, and rather than run down to the, and pay $400, $500 a month, they'd like to do it there at their own houses. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any questions or anything? Oh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any questions on any of this?
My only comment is that, you know, I, I don't know that we should be concerned about who is occupying the residence. People are having a hard time paying their mortgage. If they can put a little casita up and collect rent, then so be it. The economy is different than it's been in a long time. So I don't think we should limit people's freedom and worry about whether they have a carport attached or not. I think to the greatest extent possible, we should let people do with their properties what they will, and provide it doesn't harm their neighbors. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we're adjourned. If you could have got 30 more minutes out of this. Are we hungry?
Everyone else has left the call.
Yeah.
Jeff, I want to tell you, you can.
I know. This is good.